Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Londale City Council. I'm going to ask the Assistant City Clerk to give us a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Here.
All members present?
Thank you, sir. Let's have a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Now, I'd like to call on a celebrity in the midst that's starting on the news. If he's available tonight, let's listen to Captain Allen's public safety report.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for September 8th through September 20th. As we have left summer and are beginning the fall season, obviously, one of our biggest concerns was and is COVID-19 and its effect on the nation, our state, and our city. It appears the state is beginning to reopen, and hopefully, we are over the hump. As we move forward, we continue to ask everyone to adhere to the county's health guidelines in order to keep each other safe and secure from this virus. In regards to crime, the city's overall crime rate remains low. We continue to see a decrease in assaults, burglaries, larcenies, as well as grand theft autos, which are down from previous highs. Unfortunately, we have had one homicide and a shooting in the past month, which appears to be isolated to a certain location and does not reflect our community as a whole. The homicide is currently being investigated. In regards to Project Room Key, there have been no significant issues or concerns over the past month. As many of you are aware, the South Los Angeles station was a focus for protests over the past three weeks. Though the community protests remain peaceful, the station found itself under attack on several occasions by persons not residing in the Los Angeles area. After launching mortars and throwing frozen bottles and rocks at the station and deputies, these violent disruptive groups were subsequently deterred by using less than lethal munitions and through also arrests. The past week has been peaceful at the station. Last department is mandated to provide support for the Bobcat fires. Therefore, all patrol station personnel have been on 12-hour shifts since last week. This support will continue for the foreseeable future. What this means for the city is that when station deputies are not at the fire, you'll have extra deputies patrolling your city. Speaking of patrolling, you may be aware our motorcycle deputy was injured recently on duty. He's doing well, but his patrol minutes have been supplemented by providing another non-call traffic car, in order to provide continuous traffic enforcement. This concludes my public safety report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Captain. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions concerning the captain's report? I want to thank you for your report, Captain Allen, and we wish that the officer, the deputy, have a quick recovery from his accident.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for that report. Okay, moving right along. Let's have oral communications. Let's call on the Assistant City Clerk for any oral communications we may have.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one public comment. I'll read it verbatim. Pam London, Londale resident. "I hope you will give a lot of thought to tonight's agenda as you vote on fee changes, fee recovery, and other issues. Remember when it was costing the city about $6 for every street sweeping ticket ridden? That was more than seven years ago, and yet the city has not taken action on all the outdated fees. Londale has ignored and neglected its responsibility to recover costs when available. Fees and fines have been allowed to stay below cost for too long. Someone needs to look at all departments, raise all fees when and where allowed. Apparently, there have been shootings in Londale over the past three to four weeks. All Londale residents should be made aware of this type of crime so that they may take necessary precautions to try and minimize exposure. Once upon a time, the sheriff's department was asked to cherry pick the safety report. Maybe it's time to rethink that. There is so much crime in Little Londale that you really need to hide it? Some people do not want to join next door. I do not want to read crybaby complaints, gripes, snipes, and worthless threats of coming to council meetings. Hopefully, the sheriff's department will look into all the EDD fraud that's being committed in Londale. Any property that is vacant for sale, and even those that are occupied, are at risk of receiving fraudulent EDD payments. Those who receive these need to be careful, but turn those letters into the proper authorities immediately. Do not wait. Ask for more patrols in your area. Consider the fact that someone has had their identity stolen. Think if that were you. Remember, this is tax money. Do you really want it wasted going into the pockets of criminals? Think about it." That concludes public comment.
Thank you, sir, for those public comments. Are there any comments regarding public comments? Okay, seeing that we want to thank the residents for those public comments, let's move to our consent calendar items. Yeah, on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar?
Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney.
Yes, sir.
I just have one issue on the warrants counts payable, and that's on the employing investigative services from Leaper, Cassidy, and Whitemore. Almost $10,000. What is that fee? Can somebody answer that for me?
I'm sorry, you're saying almost $200,000?
No, almost $10,000.
Oh, that one? It's an investigation that's being done for one of our departments. I don't know if our HR director can give us more details or not.
Is that a one-time cost?
It's ongoing investigation, from what I consider, from what I understand, and there are more costs that are coming. I saw some more today, in fact. Yes, it's actually two investigations that are going on. I can't really provide any additional information because it is a personnel issue.
Okay. Okay, I just want to know what that tells me.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, what is the pleasure? It sounded like Mr. Pat Kearney was going to make a motion.
Anyone else could I go make a motion to accept the case?
Okay, so the motion has been made.
I am.
Approved the consent calendar by Kearney. Is there a second?
It's Councilman Reed, I'll second.
Okay, and Councilman Reed, second the motion for the consent calendar approval. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the Assistant City Clerk to give the vote.
For the consent calendar, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda is the public hearing, item number seven, concerning animal licensing fee update.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Michael Reyes, Director of Municipal Services. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The staff report is to request your support in adopting resolution number CC-2009-052, which would allow for an increase of animal licensing fees. Currently, animal service calls are handled by the Municipal Service Department, with the licensing and registration costs being shared between MSD and the Finance Department. With the introduction of the new Citizen Serve program, residents will have the ability to register their pets online 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, creating a benefit for residents who do not otherwise wish to have to come to City Hall each year to register their pets. Citizen Serve will alleviate the workload for both the Finance Department and the Municipal Service Department, but the added cost to the city will be about 3% for every license that Citizen Serve processes, with additional fees for credit card processing and administrative costs. With current licensing for dogs costing only $20 each per dog, and costs as low as $5 per dog for seniors registering spayed or neutered animals, the city will see a significant reduction in revenue due to these new costs. The city of Londale currently charges the lowest dog license fees in the entire South Bay area, and with anticipated increased costs expected from our partners at the County of Los Angeles, NSPCA, for kenneling and after-hour services, staff believes that increasing license fees will help to offset these additional costs. An included survey demonstrates that when other cities are charging their residents for dog licensing and comparable services, the new proposed fees would still offer discounts for spayed, neutered dogs, and a discount for senior residents. Even with these proposed increases, the city of Londale fees would still be lower in cost than neighboring cities. Staff recommends the fee for annual dog licenses to increase from $20 to $60 for unaltered dogs. As an incentive to spay or neuter dogs, we recommend the annual fee increase to $20. For senior residents, we recommend a $30 annual fee for unaltered dogs and a $10 annual licensing fee for altered dogs belonging to seniors. As required, the notice of public hearing for this matter was published in the Daily Breeze on September 11th and 16th. Staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing to receive testimony regarding our dog licensing fees increases and adopt resolution number CC-2009-052, and I can answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you for that staff report. Are there any points of clarification before we open up the public hearing? Seeing none at this time, it is 6:42. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Public hearing is hereby unopened. I'm going to ask if anyone would like to testify in this manner, if we have had any communication. I guess at this time, we would swear those folks in. Not quite sure how we're going to do that, but we normally would swear those folks in at this time if there was anyone wishing to testify. Let me ask you, this is Madam City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk, has anyone written in, written testimony?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one written testimony for item seven, and I'll go ahead and read it verbatim. Pam London, Londale resident. "Some of you may remember that I suggested raising fees years ago, only to be told that it could not be done. Funny how that changes when someone in the city realizes how ridiculously low Londale's fees are. The staff report suggests approximately 1,400 dog licenses in Londale. In previous years, the number was closer to 850. Maybe some of you remember Mayor Hoffman suggests approximately 7,000 dogs in Londale. Under the evil entity a few years ago, the city spent a considerable amount of money to hire a temporary animal control person to canvass Londale. At that time, there were two full-time and one part-time animal control officers doing very little, but they could not be directed to do the canvas. Will Londale ever get animal licensing under control? I hope that you will reconsider the new fee schedule. Any animal that is not spayed or neutered should be at the absolute highest fee possible to prevent the continuation of pets born unwanted. Any pet adopted from a shelter or reputable animal rescue is altered prior to placement. Pets that are not altered and bred should be licensed following the LA City/County guidelines. There is no excuse for allowing animals to breed irresponsibly. In some cases, due to health or old age considerations, may be given allowing a pet to remain intact. There should be a requirement for such consideration in the form of a letter from a veterinarian providing an explanation of any condition preventing the animal from having surgery. Only seniors with altered pets should receive discounts. This helps promote spay and neuter. In the future, I hope Londale will add cats to the licensing requirement. In the past two months, there has been a seagull and a pigeon on my block with a broken wing. If the city were able to collect more fees, then possibly birds would also be considered worth saving." That ends testimony for item seven.
Okay, thank you for providing the testimony as written. At this point, seeing that there's no more written testimonies, we will close the public hearing. It is now 6:45. I'll close the public hearing and bring it up to the diocese for any comments from the council we discuss. I do have one question that I would like to pose. Let me make sure I understand this. The fee that's recommended is $60? You got one to read on, on the next one?
Good evening. It's from Mr. Mayor. This is Michael again. The fee would go from $20 for an unaltered dog owned by a non-senior to $60 for an unaltered dog owned by a non-senior. But if the dog is altered, the price dropped to $20. If it's a senior registering an unaltered dog, the standard price is $30 annually. If it's a senior who also alters his dog or her dog, it would drop to $10 annually, which would still be an increase over existing rates, but still lower than most other South Bay cities.
Well, that's what I was going to say. I mean, I'm all for being lower than, you know, the next town or what have you, when it makes sense. And I was wondering, is there a justification for being lower than, not on par with the other cities?
Well, we're just looking to be reasonable. We are in a pandemic. We do realize a lot of people are out of work these days. So, we are trying to raise it incrementally. We don't want to do too high. We thought this was a fair amount. This does still offset the costs that will be implemented with Citizen Serve, but we thought this was a reasonable amount. I would like to add, too, there was an error initially in the staff report that we submitted to earlier. We did make that correction. It is 3%, not 350 per license, which actually comes up closer to about $1 to $1.50 per license, but there still is some cost with the new program.
Okay, I got it.
So, part of the reason for the increased fees was to offset those new costs.
So, notwithstanding the pandemic, when we get things back to quote-unquote "normal," I would imagine that we would revisit this to make sure that we are on par with the other cities and that we are truly having costs on recovery.
Yes, we can revisit anytime the council feels the need to. We can reexamine if the council would like to consider direction to make them higher than this proposed amount. We're open to the suggestions of the council.
May I make a comment, please? This is Marla Pendleton, the Finance Director.
Yes, ma'am.
We did put out an RFP to have citywide all of our fees reviewed, and this will be included in that. With the study being done, the fee study, our hope is to implement new rates effective the beginning of next fiscal year. So, this will be an interim increase, and we'll evaluate based on the cost of studies with our outside contractor doing the work. So, it will be looked at again with potential recommendations at that time.
Okay. And just for my own clarification, how many dogs are you allowed to have in the city of Londale? One dog, yes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I believe it's four.
Four. That's a lot of dogs. Okay, this one. Okay, is there any other comments? Okay, seeing no other comments, I'm going to bring it, I'm going to entertain a motion if you would like to make a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Reed. I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Yes, sir. It's been moved that we
Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney. I'll second it.
And seconded by Councilman Kearney. So, Reed made the motion, seconded by Councilman Pat Kearney. Thank you, Councilman Reed and Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for the vote.
For item number seven, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. We're now on item eight, which is another public hearing concerning amending the Londale Municipal Code concerning density bonus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This is Sean Moore, Director of Community Development. Tonight, before you have a update to the density bonus ordinance regulation, the council adopted density bonus regulations back in 2011. More recently, we made some amendments back in 2017, and with the changes, constant changes up in Sacramento, more updates, changes to the density bonus regulations were adopted by the state, and they are effective January 1st, 2020. The proposed ordinance attached to the staff report deals with our existing regulations, but we're updating a few areas. As highlighted in the staff report, there's updates to eligibility requirements, revised definitions, clarification for parties, incentives, and concessions. It also identifies other folks that are qualified for density bonus. Now, density bonus programs are incentives provided to developers to incentivize them to build affordable housing, I forgot to mention at the beginning. There's updates to affordability requirements and time limits, adds requirements, additional requirements for developers to replace existing affordable homes, and provides provisions for donation of the land. So, if a developer in lieu of building affordable units in their development, and they have extra land, they can donate. So, we provide those extra provisions in the ordinance. The proposed ordinance is exempt under CEQA. We posted a public notice, and the Daily Breeze, the Planning Commission, and the FIVEO voted recommending approval to the city council on September 9th. The city attorney's office has reviewed the proposed attached ordinance. There are no fiscal impacts. This concludes staff's report. We recommend approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that staff report. Are there any points of clarification needed before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, it is 6:52. I will open up the public hearing at this time. Public hearing is now unopened. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read any testimonies that may have been sent in.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. No testimony received.
Okay, seeing that there's no testimonies to read, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. It is 6:52. The public hearing is now closed, and I'm going to bring it up to the council for discussing on this item.
Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney.
Yes, sir.
I have one question for Sean. On your highlight number three, where it says, "Provides additional incentives for developers for development projects for housing foster use, disabled veterans, and homeless persons." How likely would a developer try to build a homeless shelter in Londale?
Councilman Kearney, that would be a separate provision.
Okay.
They do have provisions, you know, density bonus. Basically, these density bonus provisions are to go in, or are incentives to, for example, like on the 41 units of a 130-year-old hopper, where they provide a number of units, not the whole complex. It's usually a few units out of their complex. It's not for a whole homeless shelter. A homeless shelter would, sorry? Yeah, a whole homeless shelter is reviewed under our separate provision.
Okay.
Okay, good clarification.
Yeah, that was a good question.
Okay, are there any other questions of the staff that's not entertaining a motion?
This is Councilman Kearney. I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Kearney to approve the staff recommendation.
It's Councilman Reed, I'll second.
Councilman Reed and Kearney is in tonight. Thank you, guys. Motion made by Kearney, seconded by Reed. Are there any discussions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct the vote.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read the title first?
Please do that, ma'am.
Thank you. This is ordinance number 1175-20, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Londale, California, amending Londale Municipal Code, Chapter 17.50, to update density bonus standards for consistency with state law. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Mr. Assistant City Clerk, let's conduct the vote.
For item eight, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney? Councilmember Kearney?
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. We're now at item nine under administration, concerning establishing administrative citation fee. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. This is Michael Reyes, Director of Municipal Services, and the staff report is for the adoption of resolution number CC-2009-053, which would establish fees for administrative citations. At a prior city council meeting, the council voted unanimously in favor of an ordinance authorizing administrative citations, but staff requested a direction from the city council of how best to move forward with the setting of fine amounts for administrative citations. At prior council meetings, the city council was informed of the cost-saving benefits the introduction of administrations would have on the community and how administrative citations would serve as a motivational driver to encourage compliance from property and business owners violating the city of Londale's municipal code, especially for lesser violations such as trash cans being left out and for overgrown lawns. Per direction from the city council, the following proposed fine schedule is set forth in the attached resolution with the following fines. $100 for the first violation, $250 for the second violation, $500 for the third violation, except for violations of Chapter 8.12 of the Londale Municipal Code regarding fireworks, which are set at $1,000 for each violation. Per ordinance number 1174-20, unpaid citations will accrue late fees of 50% of the fine if not paid within 20 days of the date of issuance. With an additional 10% added to the original fine for each subsequent month, the violation remains unpaid, up to but not to exceed 100% of the overdue fine. Violating parties will have the option to appeal any administrative citations through a hearing officer for violations regarding non-building-related issues, or by yet-to-be-established hearing board for violations with building-related issues. Staff recommends that the city council approve resolution CC-2009-053, and I can answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the report concerning item nine?
This is Mayor Protem Suarez. I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know we just, just to clarify, it doesn't go straight. You give a few notifications before we start tapping fines on people. Is that correct?
That is correct for property owners and for business owners. That would not be correct for fireworks violations, should we begin enforcing them if it falls onto the city staff. Also, with vendors, food vendors that are operating without licenses, we'll probably give them a verbal warning, but if we see them the second time, we'd begin with citations. The same would be true of people doing illegal dumping. We wouldn't begin with a warning. We would simply start with a citation. But for the business owners and property owners, they are given notice of violations, a first and a second, before they're issued a citation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions of the staff report on item nine? Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion at this time concerning item nine.
Mr. Mayor, just to hear, we do have two public comments for this, and I can go ahead and read them.
Yes, sir. Let's hear those. Thank you.
Okay, I have two public comments. I'll begin with the first one, read it verbatim. First one is from Randall Abram, Londale resident. "The administrative citation fees, as recommended, are far more fair, and it is hoped that implementing the administrative program will speed up the process so that violations do not take years to finalize. The flaw in implementing this much-needed program is that primarily it relies on the reactive proactive method of enforcement. We know that citations can be an effective tool, as seen in its use against illegal fireworks. Unfortunately, this can be hampered by the lack of enforcement when lawless individuals outnumber the available enforcement officers. Wherever you walk in Londale, there are visible examples of violations. In order to enact compliance, it requires residents to turn in their neighbors by alerting the city of violations. This does not provide an equitable enforcement. It can produce conflicts. In a city largely comprised of renters, you will find few who are interested in enhancing their neighborhood because they have no financial interest in doing so. My neighbor has come forward numerous times to promote a yearly property inspection program. The program can be self-funded, and in cities with high rentals, it ensures that properties are registered, gaining revenue for the city, and enhancing the quality of life in the neighborhoods. This program alone would eliminate conflicts arising from neighbors having to report violations, since all rentals would be affected. Enforcement would not be spotty throughout the city and could eventually reduce Enforcement would not be spotty throughout the city and could eventually reduce code enforcement staff time. Currently, most of the time of the limited staff in code enforcement is spent following up the backlog of code violations. One can only hope that the threat of a fine will present a financial incentive for immediate compliance and allow code enforcement officers to pursue additional violations." Second comment on item nine is Pam London, Longdale resident. "Another suggestion I had made was, that was previously ignored by council, maybe someday Longdale will begin the rental programs, rental property inspection program. Even so, I'm glad to see that someone in the city has the ability to sway you. Code enforcement officers will need the council's support moving forward. There should not be interferers from anyone suggesting the citation be forgiven or remove duty of friends whining. If there is a backdoor, close it now. Don't let years go by like you did with underground wiring. Citations for weeds to your knees should not be complaint-driven. It is past time the city bring up standards and enact the bare minimum maintenance requirements for all properties. Make Longdale appear to be reputable." That ends comment for item nine. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you for reading those public comments. I want to thank the residents who weighed in with the public comments as well. With that, beginning of discussion on item nine.
I have one question. Is it we're going after the renters or the responsible parties as the owners on their rent property?
If it's a building and safety type question, violation, or what type of violation?
Okay, well, let's like the lawns, the yards.
Then we usually actually go after both.
Okay. Okay. All right. So if there are other further questions, I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendations.
Okay. The motion has been made by Councilman Kearney that we approve staff recommendation. And...
That's no seconds.
I'll second it. All right. You want to second it, Reed?
I'll let you have it, sir.
Okay. I'll weigh in tonight. In a second, by Pullen Miles. So the motion was made by Kearney and seconded by Pullen Miles. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the clerk to conduct the vote.
For item nine, Mayor Protem Suarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney.
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. We're now on item number 10, administration concerning amending the Longdale Municipal Code, providing authorization for recovery of attorney's fees. That's the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, this is Tiffany Israel, the City Attorney. I'll be presenting this item.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The Longdale Municipal Code currently provides authority for the recovery of attorney's fees in any action, administrative proceeding, or special proceeding to abate a public nuisance. However, as the applicable law has changed lately, staff is now recommending that the council amend the code to provide authority for recoveries of attorney's fees and to ensure the imposition of triple damages against a property owner when there are two judgments within a two-year period against that property. This proposed update to the municipal code will make it clear that the city is authorized to collect triple damages and reasonable attorney's fees, as I mentioned, when a property owner is found liable for a public nuisance for a second or subsequent time within a two-year period. The additional penalties hoped, hopefully, will deter the property owner from repeatedly allowing code violations to occur on their property. The introduction of ordinance number 1176-20 would amend the code to provide this authority. Please let me know if you have any questions.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Just a point of clarification. So what is the definition of a public nuisance versus that's a code violation itself?
Sure. It's defined in the Health and Safety Code of certain types of property violations. There's a long list, more than 25 types of property codes that if they're violated, that would make it dangerous for someone to live in a home. You know, like say, like there's a hole in your roof and you're not fixing it. Things like that are considered a public nuisance by definition.
Okay. I get it. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so not, you're not mowing your grass, not, you know, you need to paint your house, but serious public safety violations.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions of the City Attorney regarding item 10?
This is Mayor Protem Suarez, and I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this specific, this is for City Attorney, is this specific to property owner or property? So in the event that it changes property owners, you wouldn't, this wouldn't qualify?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless it's, you know, like, you know, they put it in the name of a corporation and you can show it's still them, but if it's, if it's a completely new fire, they, they wouldn't get tagged for something that had happened the year before.
It would start the clock all over again for them.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there any other questions concerning item 10 of the City Attorney? Seeing none, a motion, entertaining motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Reed. I would move to approve the first reading ordinance 116-20.
Okay. Councilmember Reed has moved that we approve the first reading of the ordinance, the second.
And I'll second it.
And Protem Suarez has seconded the motion. I'm going to ask the, is there any discussion on the motion, any debate? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct the vote. Let's read it first.
Yes, if I could read the title first, that'd be great. This is ordinance number 1176-20, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, amending sections 8.24.115 and 8.24.200 of the Longdale Municipal Code to provide authority for recovery of attorney's fees and imposition of triple damages in public nuisance abatement actions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Without any further discussion, unless there's further discussion, I'm going to ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct the vote.
For item 10, Mayor Protem Suarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney.
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. We're now on item 11, concerning the cancellation of the annual Halloween Haunt Event. Let's have staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Mike Estes, Director of Community Services. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. The City of Longdale Halloween Haunt Special Event Program has been one of the city's most well-attended events over the years. After five years at Landra County Regional Park between 2007 and 2011, in 2012, the Halloween Haunt Event was moved to the new Longdale Civic Center Plaza, where it has remained ever since. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city has canceled a vast majority of Community Services Department programs until furthest note, further notice, and most special events. Outside of the city's annual Memorial Day Ceremony, which was held as a virtual event this past May, all other special events, special event programs have been canceled. Per the Los Angeles County Safer at Home Order, the health officer orders the closure of activities where more frequent and prolonged person-to-person contacts are likely to occur. The health officer's order also identifies the closure of all events and gatherings. In fact, just recently, the health officer released Halloween guidance identifying the following is not permitted in the county. Halloween gatherings, events, or parties with non-household members, even if they were conducted outdoors, carnivals, festivals, live entertainment, and haunted house attractions. Activities that are not recommended are door-to-door trick-or-treating due to the fact it can be very difficult to maintain social distancing on porches and at front doors, or trunk-or-treating, where childrens go from car to car instead of door-to-door to receive their treats. At this point, no money has been spent on the Halloween Haunt Event, nor have any financial commitments been made. Staff recommends that the City Council cancel the upcoming Halloween Haunt Event scheduled for Saturday, October 31, 2020, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Longdale Civic Center Plaza, and I'm available to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. Thank you for the report. Is there any questions of the report? Any discussions? Okay. Seeing none, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
Who wants to give the council?
Councilman Reed wants to give the Halloween.
Unfortunately, due to our circumstances, that's the reality. Not that I want to, but yes, sir, I do move that we approve.
And I'll second it. I know you don't, but I thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so it's been a move by Councilmember Reed and seconded by Councilman Kearney that we accept the staff recommendation to unfortunately cancel the Halloween Haunt Event. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. We can take this with an adamant consent. I would imagine, yeah, we can take this without any objection, unless you just want a roll call vote, Madam City Attorney.
Without objection, I think it's fine.
Say it again?
Asking if there's no objection and moving forward, I think it's fine.
Okay. Without objection, we will so move the approval as recommended by Councilmember Reed and Kearney that we cancel the event, Halloween Haunt, unfortunately. So that'd be the order. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Item 12, award of construction contract. Who wants to give that report?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. This is Kahono, the interim Director of Public Works, and thank you. The staff report before you tonight is for the award of the construction contract in the amount of $1,177,400 to Shannon for the Inglewood Avenue Rehabilitation Project Phase One. The limit of the project is from Marine Avenue to Northerly of the railroad tracks, and this is a continuation of the Phase Three project that was completed in 2019. And the scope of the project includes the grind and rubberized overlay, sidewalk and ADA handicap ram reconstructions, as well as traffic signal modifications at the freeway 405 off-ramp. And we also have a project that is within the City of Redondo Beach. And the City of Redondo Beach also has a project that is located at the intersection of Manhattan Beach and Inglewood Avenue. As part of the arrangement, we have a discussion with the City of Redondo Beach where we swap the project. The City of Redondo Beach will complete the traffic signal modifications at the intersection of Manhattan Beach and Inglewood, as well as fixing the left-turn pocket westbound within the City of Longdale's area, changing from one lane left turn to a two-lane left turn, as well as the pavement from the intersection of Manhattan Beach and Inglewood to all the way to the Northerly of the railroad track. The project was advertised and five bids received, and based on the bid evaluation, Shannon was the lowest-end responsive bidder. And if the contract is awarded tonight, the construction contract may not start until sometime in November due to the 14 weeks of lead time for the reordering of the traffic signal poles and also the traffic signal equipment. The project is anticipated to be completed in May of 2021, and staff recommend that the City Council award the construction contract to Shannon. And with that, I conclude my staff report, and will be happy to answer any question you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the staff report. Were there any discussion or questions on the staff report?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Reed. Just a point of clarity, I would like to make sure along the Inglewood area between Marine and 152nd, we have an area that is combination of concrete and asphalt, where the asphalt invariably rolls up within a few months. Is there something being done with that particular segment where it doesn't overlap itself, or is it going to remain as is with the concrete?
Councilmember Reed, the concrete will not be removed at all. Basically, we are going to grind the asphalt adjacent to the concrete, and then we will just pave all the way to the concrete. This is going to be the same situation, just Marine to the north, that were, you know, completed as part of the Phase Three project. We are going to have the same situation over there and here.
Okay. I'd like to make sure we put a timer on how long it takes that thing to roll up again after it's completed.
What we can do is, you know, we can make some adjustment with the grinding of the asphalt, so that we at least it's going to be thick enough so it does not roll like the way it is right now.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussions on item 12? Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion at this time for item 12.
Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney. I move to approve recommendation.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Kearney that we approve the recommendation.
Reed, two, one. Councilman Reed, I'll second it.
Councilmember Reed has seconded the motion. Thank you, gentlemen. So it's been moved by Kearney and seconded by Reed that we approve the recommendation of the staff concerning the award of the contract to Shannon. Shannon, I'm going to ask the City Assistant City Clerk to give us the vote.
For item number 12, Mayor Protem Suarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney.
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Next item on the agenda is a City Manager's Report.
Excuse me. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is Kevin Chun, City Manager. First, I'd like to just add a reminder for the council and as information for the public. Our city facilities, as of today, are reopened by appointment only. So if members of the public have business to do with any one of our city departments, you can call to our departments and make an appointment to meet with the staff from each one of those departments. So that is open by appointment as of today. The second item I wanted to bring to your attention is, as of today, we have started our semi-annual Cleanup Week event. This is similar to what we did back in March, where it was a modified Cleanup Week. Fortunately, because of the pandemic, we will only have bulky item pickup on trash days for residents, and unfortunately, we will not be able to conduct the e-waste event or the voluntary, or the volunteer, I should say, litter pickup event. So again, it will just be bulky item pickup on trash day, and that will amount to one additional bulky item pickup for our residents. And then we also are teaming up with the UCLA Blood and Platelet Center to conduct a blood drive on October 6th, and that will be right here at City Hall in the public right-of-way area here on Buhrin Avenue, and that will be from 8:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. And we invite all members of the public who are interested in donating blood to attend the event and to donate. As you know, there is a blood shortage, as there always seems to be, so we encourage anybody that is interested. so we encourage anybody that is interested and willing to donate blood. And the final thing I have to offer, uh, Mr. Mayor, is I just wanted to thank all of the staff who um uh were responsible for writing staff reports and providing um presentations tonight as a lot of work went into uh the development of this um agenda packet. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So did I clarify to say that um the bulky pickup, that constitutes one of your bulky pickups if you participate in the cleanup um week and you put bulky items out? That's one?
Um, I'll let Kehono uh clarify, but as I understand it, it is um, this will be an additional bulky item pickup. So uh I believe, uh, uh, I believe uh according to our contract with Republic Services, uh, it includes six bulky item pickups that residents can call in for service um uh uh on a, on an annual basis. And this would be um with the cleanup week um event, it'll be one additional uh bulky item pickup. So this amounts to seven.
Okay, got it, it's additional to, okay, yeah, okay. Thank you for that, sir. All right, thank you for your report. Um, let's move on to item thirteen, um, new items from the mayor and council members. Let's start with council member. I'm looking visually, let's start with um Councilmember Osborne.
Thank you, but I have, I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, I attended Contract Cities Meeting, uh, multiple updates there, most of them in regards to loss of local control issues which are going on up in Sacramento. And uh, well, some have been defeated and we'll keep moving on others. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kearney?
I just want, uh, the city manager and I attended uh the Lobby Trust and Oversight Committee meeting via Zoom, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. And Mayor Protem Suarez?
I attended the South Bay City Council Government Steering Committee via Zoom as well. And that's it.
Oh, thank you. I attended the um via Zoom, the Sanitation District Board of Directors um meeting. And also attended um, I believe that's via Zoom as well, the South Bay Association of Realtors uh Mayor's um panel where we just discussed um basically an update on what's going on in our various cities as related to um COVID nineteen, how we responded to COVID nineteen, um, recovery plans and uh as we move forward um 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 out of um COVID nineteen pandemic um um status. Um, and that was today. And that's all I have. I do have one item I just want to bring to their attention. Um, and that's concerning, I'm seeing an increase, and it's probably not an increase, I guess, at some point, I'm just getting kind of tired of um reporting them. And this is um abandoned items um on corner. And sometimes I'm actually kind of surprised that no one actually sees these abandoned items. Um, last week, there was a, it looks like it was a um mattress, and it was set on one corner on Inglewood for about uh maybe three days. Week before that, there was a, a lamp that was, I don't know if it was the same residence, that was right there on the corner again, I don't know how long that was there. And then recently, a couch moved into uh the, the overpass, the underpass, I should say, on Manhattan Beach Boulevard near um Mansell, I guess, and Simone in between, between those streets. Don't know how that sofa got there, but um, someone decided that it was a good location to take um a nap on. And I doubt if that was the same person who put the couch there. I'm just assuming that if you're homeless, you're probably not walking around with a full couch. You know, um, couch is convenient, right?
You never know.
It was, you never know, but it was kind of remarkable that no one actually, you know, saw in half the day that passed when you saw a full couch there. And so I just want to be mindful that we um various departments, whether it's municipal services or Public Works, that, you know, at the end of the day, when people are banning things in the public um right of way are visible, although, yeah, they're in compliance, out of compliance with the, the, the code and for dumping or whatever the violation is, but at the same time, it's our responsibility, you know, to um clean that stuff up as um as fast as possible. And it's our responsibility to notice them and not let the whole day go on and thousands of cars pass by to see, you know, couches and mattresses just abandoned, you know, giving the city, you know, a bad, you know, um name and a bad reputation. With a simple ride-around would, would reveal um a lot of this stuff. And then whether it's Public Works or the trash company um calling out to, to pick them up as soon as possible, I just want us to be mindful of those items because there seem like there's been an increase.
Mr. Mayor, this is uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's Kevin Chun, City Manager. Um, I really appreciate those comments. Um, those are um a very good reminder for us that, um, you know, we as staff uh need to be on the lookout for that. Uh, it is something that um, uh, the central management team and I have, have talked about that um it is something for uh all of our staff, in particular our field staff, to uh be on the lookout for on a daily basis to um, you know, um, of course, do your job, but in the course of doing your job, as you're going out to one location or another to uh look for these items, and if you see them, um, to call it in so that uh it can be removed. It's something that um I will um keep in the mind of all of our staff, and uh we will try to do that um, you know, best we can. It is an ongoing problem, as mentioned, uh, it is something that, it's a daily battle that we fight, uh, but we will try to do it and, and do it better. So thank you again for those comments.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, with that, that's all I have on the um mayor's and council member um comments. Um, we do have two closed sessions before we adjourn tonight. And I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give us the provision of a closed door um session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council will meet in closed session on two items, as you mentioned. The first is to confer with its labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the union. The second is to conduct a public employee performance evaluation. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, madam. At this time, we will reset the closed session and we will reconvene after closed session. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give it a report. Item number fourteen fifteen.
Robert, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll give the report out um from closed session. The city council met in closed session on two items. First, to confer with its labor negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. The council was updated on that item, no reportable action. Then on K fifteen, the council conducted a performance evaluation of an employee pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven B. And again, the council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam, the city attorney for the report. This will conclude our agenda for tonight adjournment time. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be scheduled at six thirty P M on Monday, October fifth, two thousand and twenty. It is now eight thirty-one, and this meeting is hereby adjourned.